...the editor, whether it's published or not, I don't know. But, you know, your worship, as politicians, I live by the axiom, if 50 percent of the people aren't mad at you at any given time, you're not doing your job. I mean, that's the way I've always lived. I mean, your people are gonna like you and hate you. I mean, the only one around this table that's loved by everybody is Jim, because you can see on the last election, he did really well. You know, but you notice he doesn't say much. So that's probably why they love him so much, you know? Maybe Moon will have to get an advice, follow Jim's advice, and just shut up around the table here. You know, it's the whole thing. Don't say anything. But, but I was disappointed in it, because I don't have an agenda. We raised two issues, and not to beleaguer this, but I'm gonna mention it. We raised the Ag Society, because it was brought to a councillor's attention that we had a trailer, contrary to our bylaw, sitting on a piece of property owned by the municipal unit that supposedly maybe could be using our water, sewer, and electricity paid by the municipal unit. I mean, that's due diligence. That's what we do. And the councillor brought it to the table, and it was discussed. And all of a sudden, there's a media furor that we're beating up the poor agricultural society. I mean, that was never the intent. It's no different than anybody else. And then we have the Killam Building. Well, that was left over when, from the previous council. I mean, that, we've been beating that around for two and a half years. And finally, the numbers came out. It wasn't a pretty picture. And bottom line is, is you have, and you have a building that generates 17 percent of the operational costs of the building. Well, what's wrong with this picture is 50,000 approximately dollars we're losing, your worship, which is around 70 percent of what we just gave to grants to organizations in this whole community. I mean, that's pretty sad. 70 percent. Here we are, we spent a whole day, and we, all these presentations, and all the hours we spent, and we're going to this building. So councillor Mackay's point was well taken. Close the thing down, or, you know, or drain it in the winter. I don't care what you do with the thing, but we just can't afford, as a town, and we're seeing this, we can't afford to spend that kind of money. And again, we get crucified in the press. But then what happens if we didn't do anything? This is what I'm wondering. Why don't we just let it go? Well, we would be crucified in the press. We're not doing anything. You can't win. That's that 50-50 rule. My view is this, your worship, and, you know, you hit the nail on the head, Pam, when you said, you know, in this town, we have a small group of people who, who talk a lot, and it's the same ones that scream and rant and rave, but 95 or 96 percent of the people we don't hear from, I know I talk to a lot on the street, as we all do, and I hear a lot different than what I see in the public eye. And one thing, I will say this, and I'm being very honest and very sincere. Previous council, I'd walk in that room, and I'd have butterflies in my stomach, and some nights I wanted to throw up, because it was that tense. This council, I love coming to these meetings, because this council does work as a team. I'm sorry, but we do work as a good group, and it's a good council to sit on. And contrary to what people may think, we do work together. Yeah, we disagree, but that's natural life. I mean, heck, we all disagree, but we do work together as a group, and I enjoy coming here, unlike previous. So, thank you, your worship, that was my rant.
Councillor Mackay was just, I was just about to move on, and then the, oh, anyway.
Don't worry, he was gonna agree.
I wrote a rule, one rant a day.
I'm, I'm...
Go ahead, councillor.
I'm not gonna rant.
Okay.
And everybody's entitled to their opinions. And I don't know who wrote the article, who wrote the editorial, but I don't think the person was sitting here, she's going on past, or he or she was going on past situations that developed between the past council and this council. If you read the article, you, you could clearly see that, really, to me, I don't think she's, she's not getting the right drift. I mean, we, we always don't agree, and that's just the nature of people sitting around here. We don't have all the same opinions. And if, if everybody thought and did the same thing, it might be a good world, or it might be a bad world, who knows? We receive a lot of emails, a lot of letters, a lot of correspondence, and you have to work with them, and you have to do what you think is always the best thing to do for your community and the taxpayers. The taxpayers, it's what puts you here, it's what, what we're sitting around this table. We have to make the decisions sometime that are not popular with people that it affects. And these are some issues that are not, not popular to the person that's writing the editorial, for whatever reasons. They might think that we should forgive the $50,000, and because there's a boat maybe coming up the harbor, it was good, they, they, these people survived four, six years previous to this, four years when there was a boat, two years when there wasn't. Well, the amount of rent and stuff that they were paying, it was no problem to survive. If you, if they had to go out and pay the fair market value out there, it'd be a little different. I don't think you'd see that letter from, from the editor. And it also talks about, you know, it's too costly to go up on Main Street, too costly to go on Water Street. Well, yeah, I, I understand that. But the letter from the editorial, I don't usually really comment on them, because I actually don't, what they write is what they write. But this is so unfair to, to, and they're, they're not saying who the councillors were, but I'm one of them. Councillor Landis was one, and councillor Moon is the other one. We pick on other councillors, and we said, we, we pick out other people in the community that we're going to be unfair to. Well, I think that's so unfair, and so unprofessional, for them to even suggest that. And there'll probably be another letter to the editor that I'm just crying over spilt milk, but it's not. It, it really is not. I, I, I know these two individuals. We grew up in the same town and everything, but they know, they know where, where I come from, they know, they know where, where I am on things. I'm not, to me, when we sit around this table and we make the financial decisions, there are any decisions, it's always for the good of our community, and it's always for the taxpayers. I can honestly say that, each, each and every one of us. And we're not always, like I said, we're not always gonna agree on everything. But that doesn't mean that we don't, we don't get along, and we're a bad council. That doesn't mean that at all. Same as the last council. We, we, we didn't always agree, but, but we agreed to what we agreed on, and we disagreed with what we disagreed on. And they were right, if I didn't agree with them, and I was right, if I agreed with them, whatever. So, for the, 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 the letter from, from, from the Vanguard, I, I feel, I feel really, really bad that they would take, take it upon themselves to say that the three of us, and without even mentioning our names, it's obvious who we are, that they, they would think that of us. I think it's very small-minded. So, anyway, that's just my opinion. And, and I'd be happy if they called me or whatever, because what I'm saying now, I'd say to their face, or on the phone, emails I'm a little shaky on, but other than that, I have no problem.
We good? My only, my only problem with everything, and I've, I've, I've said this a couple times, I don't, I don't respond to any of that staff. I don't res, I don't usually, 99 percent of the time, respond to Facebook. I'm just having a hard time with the, with the fact that people think they can just put anything out there. So, I didn't read the, I haven't read the editorial, but I did see online one of the letters, for example, and I just, anyway, it doesn't matter to me. What, what bothers me is that sometimes I, I sit back and I think, maybe we need to respond. Not in a, not in a negative way, but in absence of the truth, people will believe anything. And, and so, so a letter to the editor doesn't mean it's all facts, and then somehow, maybe our facts are getting missed. What were you gonna say?
And I don't wanna begrudge this, Mayor Moot, but you know, what really annoys me is like, here we are, around this table, working so hard, and I really say this sincerely, to get this town back on track, to get this town moving in the right direction. I read letters from people chastising us, and yet, some of the authors, the same letter. Today, for example, and I don't go on Facebook much, but today I went on Facebook, and somebody posted pictures of all the empty buildings on the Main Street of Yarmouth on Facebook. Okay. And then, of course, there's like a string of 50,000 complaints, this is terrible, and we're slamming landlords and all that. What people don't realize is that, that goes beyond Yarmouth Town.
Yeah.
That, that goes beyond this community. And I mean, my heavens, wouldn't people get it? Why can't we be positive? Yes, I know it's hard to be positive, but we've got a boat coming, folks. We've got the All Hands on Deck initiative we talked about. We've got a lot of good projects happening here. I sat through a, a presentation the other day with David Solos here, Phil and Sandy were here, going through all the many organizations that are doing, the volunteer groups and all this that we are doing in this community. And I'm, two ladies said, my goodness, I didn't know we did such good things here. That's the point. We never hear of the good things. Yet, here somebody puts all of the closed businesses. Now, tell me, is there a picture of the new Mazda dealership in the, on the website? Is there a picture of the new Burger King about to open on the website? Is there a picture of the work being done at the ferry terminal? Did anyone take a picture of that, your worship, and put that on, on Facebook? No. We're gonna take pictures of empty old buildings and say, look, poor us, poor us, poor us, poor us. And you know, and I'm getting sick of it, because here's the same people coming in and ranting to us that we're not doing enough, and that we're not selling our town properly. So, I'm sorry, we are working as a team to get this done, your worship, and despite all the gripes by the media, we're gonna do it despite it.
(laughter) Yeah. By the way, you can't cross my rant line, so stop. All right. We have paintings. That's you, 'cause we talked about, go ahead.
Yeah, your worship, you know, I know, don't look around now, because we got work to do.[662.16][662.16](laughter) I would love council to look at the possibility, this is the People's Building, this is the People's Building. And I mentioned this, Jeff, some time ago, just on the sideline, wouldn't it be nice if we use this to exhibit local artists' work on a regular basis? Like, to ask, you know, invite artists to come in, maybe once a month to change the paintings around? I mean, we got a nice chamber here, but it's, it's, it's natural. We got some nice lighting, we've got some nice, it's a public building. Encourage people to come in, I mean, there's nothing you can really do, and put up some nice works of art that our local artists can do. You know what I mean? Just to, to, to put the process in place, and, and I'd like to, I know it's probably pushing it, Phil, to put it in Communities in Bloom for us to look at, but, I don't know what you think, Sandy, but I'd love to see us look at, at doing something along this line, like, like, because I know what Jeff's gonna say, well, who's gonna do it? Well, the reality is, but we could do it, maybe something that Communities in Bloom could take on, to, to actually look at having regular art shows here, in the building, where people can come in, nothing fancy, where people could come in, and we could hang works of local art. And I don't mean just one artist, maybe samples of three or four artists, and we cycle it. We're not gonna favor anyone over anyone else. They can, get a list, we do a list, and if you wanna come and exhibit your works, call us, and we would love to do it. So, I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to investigate, because there could be some issues, I don't know.
It's gonna be, your issue, do you mind if I just say something?
Yes, by all means.
It's gonna be a matter of a policy.
Yes.
So that we don't have to worry about any of the logistics.
Right.
Here are the questions, here are the answers.
Right. Exactly. So I'm gonna put a, I'm gonna put a motion that we direct staff to look at the creation of a policy that we can use the council chambers to display works of art, and this isn't gonna be limited to painting, it could be sculpture too, works of art by our town residents.
Okay. Do I have a seconder?
Second.
Moved and seconded, councillor Dennis, go ahead.
Um, I like, I really like the idea, but I, I just think that I want to make sure that we're not stepping on like, um...
The Arc.
The, the, um, Art Gallery of Nova Scotia.
Well, no, we work with them. The idea is, we would work all together.
Okay.
It's not, we're not doing this in isolation. We would work with all the groups to make sure that we're all...
Okay. Perfect, yeah, I'd be great with that. I think it's a, I think it's a wonderful idea. Yep.
Okay. CAO?
Your worship, if, if the motion passed, it would be my intention that we would, we would consult with the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia, because obviously, we have no experience with gallery policy, but we would, we would develop something that, that meets, that we would hope would meet your, your goals, bring it back to council, and then you can make it yours.
Go, go ahead, deputy mayor.
Ken, I, you mentioned the town in our, in your motion. I meant, it should be wider than just the town.
It's our town, yeah.
Well, there are people who sell art, there are arts within our town, who are from the shores, Acadian Shores down.
I mean, you know, I think that's what...
Didn't want to keep it just to the town.
Yeah, exactly. That's something that they could make into a policy. I'd like to see priority given to our attachers. It's their bill, you know what I mean? The municipality wants to follow the rules, and that's fair law. Yeah, it's their bill, I mean, I, I'd like to see, I'd hate to see...
Just to respond to deputy mayor, I'd hate to see us refuse a Yarmouth Town resident in favor of a resident who doesn't pay taxes. You know what I mean? That's what I'd hate to see happen. So suddenly, you have only displays, even though there may be better artists living, you know, for example, in, in Digby or living in Shelburne, yet, you know, it would be something that maybe, again, it could be something that the CAOs could be discussing among themselves with their sister units. But, yes, Jim, I, I would say, I'd be more than willing to change, to drop the reference to town of Yarmouth to art, just remove that, if my seconder would agree, to, to local artists. We just leave that language, and then that will give us more flexibility. You're quite right, it is finite, but again, I, I, my intent was to, to try to promote our local artists here in this area, that's all.
And last comment, my wife would probably offer about 25 paintings right now that are just laying on the wall at home, on the floor.[946.04][946.04](laughter)
Mommy got a thousand. Okay. So we've moved and seconded, is there any further discussion with the, with the change? So to, question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Deer crossing.
And, thank you, your worship, just a question. We had this on Friday night, Communities in Bloom presentation here in the front, front place. People, I know we've had duck crossing signs, and I know we've had a fatality on Forest Street, but Dave is here. That was, no, but, um, somebody's deer crossing, maybe? Signs, is that a possibility, Dave? Forest Street, I know it's, I know it's hard.
There's numerous locations for deer crossing.
Yeah, and, and I think it's that cor, the one on, yeah, I know on my street, but, that was a, that was a question that was brought to me, myself, councillor Landis, councillor Dennis, on Friday night. So...
Do you want, do you wanna answer that? Is, we just make the motion and you handle it? Because there's an awful lot of deer crossing places. One of them's right in front of my, they're in my backyard all the time.
There are large areas as well, there's a plus of trees.
So were you just talking about Forest Street?
Not, well, it was brought to our attention on, I think councillor Landis might be able to...
Councillor Landis might be able to add to it. It was brought to our attention on Friday night, and it was just a question from a constituent, and I heard it actually another time on, on Tuesday night, actually. So, there, this was on, one was on Forest Street, another one was on the Clements going on to Forest.
I, I think the main discussion, your worship, was the Forest Street. The, the lady in question was concerned there, because there's a lot of traffic now with the new school, and that's, of course, where the unfortunate fatality occurred. And that was the concern for it, but you are quite right. I mean, Communities in Bloom identified the three, there's at least three herds in the town, literally. And I know the CAO has on his plate how to handle three herds. I can think of, yeah. I, oh, yeah, well, they're there, they're, I've had one on my lawn, you know, so I mean, so it's, it's, it's not an unusual thing. So it's something we have to address, there's no question. And, you know, you've got a town that's definitely a, an animal-friendly town. I mean, I, I drove into the jail the other night, and there was 12 deer looking at me in the field. I'm driving down the road, and there's two ducks walking across the road, and I'm looking at geese flying overhead. I said, my God, we're not marketing this town well. I mean, we're like a nature haven here.
That's our new branding project. Welcome to Yarmouth, it's a zoo.[1125.54][1125.54](laughter)
But we're friendly.[1129.12][1129.12](laughter) As friendly as it, so anyway, I don't know the solution either, but it was a concern a lady did bring up to councillor Mooney and I, and I don't know how CAO or want to do it, but we did promise to bring it forth.
Councillor Mackay?
Thank you, your worship. Probably, if you don't know, I'll, I'll say it. My, my nephew was, was killed two years ago with a deer rode on Forest Street. But anyway, this, this is a, a problem, and I don't know if signs, signs will help, but I think we have to have some correspondence with our Lands and Forest people, and we also have, have to have a conversation with, with the province. They're, they're becoming to be, they're getting to be more, more of a problem than, than not. And they're, they're running rampant all through the streets of the town of Yarmouth. I don't know where, which would be, I'm kinda like Dave, I don't know where the ideal place there would be to put a sign. I think you'd have to post them probably on every street, at the beginning, and at the end, and in the middle. But, yeah, but, and, and I don't know if that's really logical to do that. I know people have to be made aware, but I also, our, our government, our, our government has to be made aware that there's just too many around. Last week, two weeks ago, going to the hospital, around 10:30 at night, there was three crossing the, crossing the road going to Kenny's Estate, the old Kenny's Estate place, three of them. And they're, they're, they're down in my, my yard also. They're, they're all over town, and nobody's, nobody's immune to them. So, I, I think that the, the conversation has to be with the powers-to-be, and that is with the Department of Lands and Forest, and also our, our member of the legislature, to see if we can get things on a roll, because we have, we definitely have a problem.
So did we not, we, okay, we sent a letter, but they responded to us.
Yeah, but we haven't heard anything back.
They responded.
Yes.
I haven't responded to their response.
Yes, okay, good. Perfect.
But I think it's more, your worship, I, I, I think it's more than just signs. Signs will help, but I think it's more of a problem than what we really can get our head around. There's lots of them, and there's, there's a great potential for more mishaps, and it would be a shame if the same thing happened that happened before. Anyway, just my thought.
So like Jeff said, you can, can't believe, I gotta, yeah, I'm gonna say it anyway. He said you can put the signs up, but the deers are gonna, deer are gonna cross where they want anyway.[1280.66][1280.66](laughter) I had to, sorry. Councillor Dennis?
Um, instead of putting like deer crossing, which we do, would it be better just to have at all entry points to the town, to have beware of deer? Because in some of the other places, they don't say, like, this is a deer crossing, or this is a duck crossing. They say beware of deer, like in Newfoundland, like beware of moose. So you see signage all saying beware, so that you actually have it in your head that you may come across a moose or a deer.
Moose, uh, deer, ducks, and raccoons. Okay, councillor Landis?
Yeah, if it's any consolation, we did discover at the Communities in Bloom workshop on the weekend that daffodils, they don't like, so, just to let you know. So if you wanna get rid of your deer, just put daffodils and garlic in your yard, and they're not very popular about that. There we are, nice deer crossing, yeah, nice. Yeah, that's it, yep.
Good. So, so did we do any, we didn't, we're just gonna wait and see what happens with the... Okay, was that all the additions? Did I miss anything? Because I wrote them down quickly. Okay. Correspondence, for action, people first, office space. Now, I, I noticed that they mentioned Windsor, and I actually called Mayor Beasley this morning, but I didn't, I kept missing his, his thing. So what do we do with this?
Do we have...
They just wanna have, they just wanna meet with us to discuss the possibility of office space, because they said that Win, like, places like Windsor that have done it too.
I'll make a motion, your worship, that we invite people first to one of the next available committee to hold for council meetings. Make a small presentation on their request.
Councillor Landis?
I'll second it for information, for, just for discussion. My, my concern is, is I, from what I recall, they wanted to house themselves here. I think that was the basic plan, get right to the nitty-gritty. And again, we're, I'm smelling Killam Building all over again, you know? I really have a problem, I, I seconded the motion, I can't support it. I mean, with all due respect, I, and I, I think a letter should ideally be sent to them, thanking them for their correspondence, but we don't house nonprofit organizations. I mean, we don't have the office space. I mean, there was talk at one time around this table, if by some reason or some fluke we get the Yarmouth Junior High, or we pick up one of the buildings, yes, that may be a possibility that we could jointly do something there, as a cooperative office spaces or something for all of these groups. But, again, I do know, we've got a number of nonprofits in this community, and they're all doing the same thing. They're renting space, second floor of, of different buildings and whatever, and, you know, so, I, I have a problem with it. It's a can of worms. I think a letter should simply be sent, saying, hey, thank you for your letter, but we are not in the real estate market, and go from there. They're a good cause, don't get me wrong, but...
But there are a lot of good causes.
But, but we're opening up one heck of a can of door, a Pandora's box on this one, unless the CAO wants to share his office.[1473.25][1473.25](laughter)
I, I agree with the letter part, but, okay, so, moved and seconded regardless, so, any more discussion?
That's the motion, the removal was to...
Just have them come here.
Was to have them come here, okay. And, and I, I would prefer to send out the letter, but, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Nay. But, all right.
Round three, three.
Okay. Who was...
I, I was for, I was for.
For them coming?
Yeah.
For them, who's for them coming? Who was the positive? Okay?
It's free, free service. Motion defeated. We don't want a vote to the main.
Motion defeated, okay?
Okay.
All right, but we will, do, I need a motion, I need a motion to do that letter. Go ahead.
I'd like to move a motion that we send a letter to people first, thanking them for their letter, and advise them that the town of Yarmouth unfortunately does not have available space for nonprofit organizations, and that we would refer them to the landlords in the town of Yarmouth, or to other area agencies in the town of Yarmouth.
So moved, can I have a seconder?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Aye.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Southwest Nova ATV Association Retail System, councillor Mackay?[1561.82][1561.82](laughter) Have we dealt with that? I was just kidding, by the way.
No, well, no, I mean, they're, they're asking for our support, but I, I don't, I don't think we should, just my opinion here, that we should give any support, that we find out what the legislation is, and, and how it's gonna be worded. It's premature, and it's not the right thing to do, to say yes, it's not, we don't know.
Okay, so how about this? I'll entertain a motion. I thought we did, but did we make a motion to, to at least send a letter to say we're gonna wait, because we have no idea what the legislation is?
I, I leave it in your capable hands, your worship.
In your capable hands. You don't need to butter me up.
No, no, no.
If, if, if your worship would, would like to address this, and send off a letter, and explain, explain what we talked about earlier today, I, I so move.
Okay, so moved. Moved and seconded, okay? The, the motion, Linda, is for me to send a letter off to the ATV Association, okay?
The ATV Association, yeah.
What's that? And say that we, it's, it's in the hands of the provincial government right now, so we can't support legislation that we haven't read yet? So we have to wait for the legislation, and then we can comment on it. then we can comment on it. It's not killing it, it's just saying, we really can't comment on legislation that's not through. Okay? Any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? How do you really feel, councillor? Okay. Genealogical Association Re-Conference. Okay, so they are requesting support as a sponsor for the event, which is being held in, I think it's Truro. Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, your worship, I, it would be nice to help support this organization, I would think that we have one particular person in town would probably like to go to that, but, no, it's, no, the other one, it's something else here I'm thinking of. But anyway, I would say that we not support this at this time, due to our financial commitments that we have already, and thank them for the offer, and perhaps at some other given time when it's a little closer to the town of Yarmouth, we'd be, might be happy to support them.
Okay. So, moved and seconded, did you want to just say?
Just a comment.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Why don't we refer this request to our museum, Yarmouth County Museum?
Because they're, because they're asking for money, and the museum asks us for money. We can, if you, if you want to refer it, but...
Well, just as a...
I don't know if a nonprofit hands out money.
Just as an aside, they might be interested.
Yeah. At least interested in the, in the event, okay? Moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Question?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. This next one, Craig Smith, Re Black Cultural Center, Royal Ferry Terminal. So, he sent a note to both Zach and myself, and the Minister of African Nova Scotian Affairs, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, must be my turn to talk today. I'm looking at this, and there's two, three other municipal partners with this ferry terminal, and there's going to be a purse, a company that's going to be renting the facility. So, I don't think that this letter on benoins to him would be in our best interest to say yes at this time, because even though we, we are the landlords, we are leasing the property out to another entity to run at their, whatever their wish is and what they want to put in there, it's not up to us. So, perhaps, your worship, with you and the CEO, perhaps could reiterate to this person or get back to Craig Smith and make this known to him that it's not any of our doings to do this. It's a good idea, but perhaps maybe it might be a better place, maybe at the, at the Torres Bureau Centre for an interpretive panel or something like that there to, to explain their black culture thing. That's just my thought, your worship, and I wait to hear what the CEO might have to say on that.
Councillor Dennis? Oh, sorry, okay, CAO?
Yeah, I would think you're right, is we are looking to lease the entire facility to Nova Star Cruises, I think we should correspond to Mr. Smith and advise him of that, but also send a copy of his request to our contacts with Nova Star, as well as to the Industrial Commission.
Okay, so, um...
Make that a motion? Yes, I'd like to make that a motion, your worship.
Moved and seconded, Councillor Dennis? No, go ahead.
I think it's a great, it's, it's great to actually show the cultures that we have around here, but I think the Torres Bureau would be the better spot to do that.
Yeah, but when I, when I first, I spoke with Craig, actually, and, you know, we're trying to celebrate our culture, so he's got in here that he was going to contact Amy Robinson too, so...
Yes, I had already contacted her before, like, quite a while ago, and she's, she would love to work on that, but she gave me the names of the people that I, we should actually speak with.
Good. Okay, moved and seconded, any further info?
Question?
Okay, questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Previously distributed, councillor?
Can I just wedge in here for a minute? Towns Caucus is having a session next week, and I think it's in Truro, or, does teleconference access, are we going to be teleconferencing out of here for that, or what's our, have we given any thought to that, or is anyone going to that thing?
I haven't even gotten...
I mean, I don't want to go to Truro for this thing, but on the other hand, sometimes, we know in the past, we've sometimes set up a little thingy here that we can kind of participate as a group.
Go ahead, CAO?
Yeah, if, if you wanted to participate by, by teleconference, we can, we can arrange that here, yeah?
You said that, but you're not going to be able to attend, are you?
I will be, I will, myself be away, but I can ensure it's set up. I'm, I mean, actually, at the same time, UNSM has set up a session in Halifax on community investment readiness, and so I'm going to attend that, CAO's been invited to that, so...
Can I have that? Have you got that email? Can you forward that to me?
Yeah.
I don't, I just didn't get it, or I missed it, so...
I know, it's going up, I mean...
No, but if we can sit here and everybody can be part of it.
No.
Yeah.
Better than...
Don't do that to me. Okay, so, previously distributed, do we need to do anything else before we go in camera?
I don't think we're going in.
Okay, good, can we have five minutes?